...us tonight during the formal session, as you may recall, the last time that the council met, we ran out of time with some of the these July 10 items. There was a packet that was provided to you that included presentations, as well as we indicated that Frank would be available tonight to go over those presentations that we missed last time that you met. A couple of things I'd like to discuss very quickly before I turn it back over to you, Mayor, for the council interest, is that we had a series of presentations today from the committees, the Finance, Economic Development and Infrastructure Committee, as well as the Transportation and Infrastructure Committee. And what we're going to attempt to do is that, in the past, they've been in your Dropbox, but we want to make sure that we get all of those reports to you through an email from winter tomorrow, if not tonight, as well as they will be available to you typically in your Dropbox. But out of the presentations that were provided today, one I'd just like to talk about for a minute is just, we talked about CEN disabled tax relief earlier, and as you will recall, there is a $6 million cap on the relief program this year. After speaking with the Commissioner of Revenue, as well as speaking with John Sandlin, the auditor, we do believe that over the course of the next year, as we provide some attention, additional attention to the program through audits and through compliance reviews, that when it's all said and done, we believe that we'll still be at that $6 million limit. So having said that, the administration took over the program the last week in June. We've had some conversations with the Commissioner of Revenue, and we are quite comfortable that we can, through a process of audits and a process of compliance reviews, that we can still be within that $6 million limit, as well as we have heard from the assessor that we will get a little blip up in the real estate assessment revenue for 2013. So we feel comfortable that we can still address CEN disabled tax relief program. The other thing I'd like to mention is that you have a resolution tonight for shared services between the cities of Virginia Beach, Chesapeake and Norfolk. My understanding is that Chesapeake is doing a slight tweak to it, that Virginia Beach may also do that slight tweak, which basically says that as good ideas come up, we have to tell you about the good ideas, and that we'll only move forward on those good ideas once the councils have been briefed. So I just wanted to tell you that I guess I'm going to maybe get a call from Jim Spoh in the middle of this meeting as to where they are with that change, but just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then lastly, council approved the comp plan. Since that time, I've had some feedback from the departments about one provision there relates to overtime. We're going to amend the comp plan. I believe that there is a slight issue that we should address. So coming to you as early as next week, there will be an amendment to the comp plan that addresses overtime. So I just wanted to get out in front of that.
Marcus, we meet at 2:00. Regularly vote.
The 24th, I'm sorry, two weeks from now, yes.
Yeah, I just had a question. Does that include, there's been some issues with the line of duty part of the comp plan that was voted on?
Well, the line of duty, there was a separate ordinance, Council Smigiel, and I've been working with staff today, so let me tee it up again. The line of duty, what the council voted on at your last formal session was basically a mechanism to fund it, whether or not we put money into the state system or we fund it locally. We saw over time that basically it's close to about $400,000 in the actual payments. If we were to have paid, let's say, a premium into the state system, it would have been over $700,000. Bottom line is that we don't have an option. We, you know, terms were like, maybe pay as you go, things of that nature. So let me just change the backdrop. We don't have an option. We make the payments. The difference is, we are going on our actual occurrence of activity versus paying into a premium for the state. So there's no opting out of this.
Right. I think the issue was with an employee who's going to be retiring soon, and what he was told with the Human Resources Department, and that person specifically said, "It was an action of council that we voted on that is denying this person their line of duty." But I think you're having a meeting probably to talk about it, so I just want to make, I didn't know if that was being addressed already or not.
That's being addressed, yes.
Okay.
Very quickly, there was an issue about, they thought there was a reduction in the benefit.
Right.
Marcus, if you're speaking.
Not at all.
Okay. Mr. Reddick, you have any answers?
Yeah, I do. A couple. I think it was at the April 2 meeting, I had a concern about our, I should say, rank-and-file police officers, I don't want to use the term beat officers, returning to, I mean, responding to issues of individuals who have mental issues. And then on April 3, the incident out near the naval base, Staff Caucus closer, that resulted in the death of a veteran. And my concern prior to that, then and now, is the fact that with the large military contingent that we have here, that we have a lot of persons who are active duty, retired, veterans, or even family members who predispose to post-traumatic stress disorder. And even a few years ago, I asked that we, men, the city of Norfolk, train their police officers, or have somebody ready to respond. And in this particular instance, the call went out that this fellow was acting suicidal and acting, you know, sort of out of character. And it seems to me that somebody who had training, you know, should have responded. And had somebody responded with training, then this death might not have occurred. They mentioned the fact that he had synthetic marijuana in his system. Well, that could last 30 days, so it's not like he just, you know, nobody knows whether this guy's just been smoking marijuana. Now, that stuff stays in your system. But my point is, again, is that we need to have person trained to respond, because this is the third death that I believe we've had in regards to persons who are military that could have been suffering from post-traumatic stress disorder. And I think we should really have used this as a learning curve. And now that we have association with the Community Services Board, we need to really be on top of that. And also, Marcus, there are some grants available, if I'm not mistaken, I know they were in the past, where we can send officers to get training, to recognize persons with post-traumatic stress disorders, as well as other mental illnesses. And if we do that, then incidents like that that occurred maybe would not happen. And so I think that we just need to kind of be proactive when it comes to things of that nature. Secondly, all of my swimming buddies over at Huntersville were under the impression that the pool would be open after July 1 on Fridays. It's not. I understand that there's some staffing issues in having to fill these positions. If we announced back in March, whenever you announced back in March or April, that we'd be turning to library hours and rec center hours and swimming hours, it seems that we should have been on top of that. And I think it's no excuse that the pool is not open yet on Fridays, as it should be, because of staffing problems. I mean, because it's not like you just said it all of a sudden. I mean, you did, you know, kind of forecast that. And finally, RBI baseball, one time when you have, and it can be after we come back, you know, before next season, I'd like to know what the structure is of RBI baseball, who runs RBI baseball? And because I'm of the opinion that we now need to make baseball a part of our recreation program as we do basketball and football. We don't need to rely on badges for baseball and RBI to get our youngsters to play baseball. I mean, it's just, it's just, in RBI this year was just awful. My son played RBI, and it was just awful. As a matter of fact, they forfeited the championship game the other day because their catcher, and that's probably, you know, partly the team's fault, did not have a catcher's mitt. And the other team wouldn't let them use it, their catcher's mitt. So they forfeited because they couldn't get a mitt there within 30 minutes. And the other team was so insensitive that not only did they get the championship trophy, but they asked if they could have the run-up trophy too. But I guess my point is, if we can put $170,000, you know, for Fleet Park, which is, you know, 500 ballplayers, then we can start now trying to create a baseball league from T-ball on up to juniors in the city of Norfolk that we run. And I just think that's something that we need to do. And the excuse about African-American ballplayers not playing baseball, if they are, they'll play baseball, but you got to get them out, you got to get them early. And you got to, you know, just get them acclimated to baseball from T-ball on up. Okay? That's all.
I just have one small thing. I've had a number of constituents call, you know, in our parking area, I guess, south of the building, a number of handicapped spots, there are three non-handicapped spots, and people try to come run in, and city trucks and cars are in those all the time. I think we need to discourage the city, I mean, they can pull up on the sidewalk, all I care, but if somebody comes in and just wants to run something upstairs. And I've had about five calls in the last six weeks about, you know, there were three city vehicles in the reparking lane. So I think we need to stop that. That's all I have. I know it's small, but.
I think we all got the letter from Reverend Kenny Bryant about the wonderful job that you and your team did in this transition, bringing CSB into administration. So I'd just like to thank you and commend you for the great job that you all did. I know that was a big task, and I was very pleased that they were as pleased with it as they were. Secondly, I think we all saw the editorial about the unfortunate ticketing of some baseball players pickup league over at the, what's the name of the park?
Bluebird.
Bluebird.
Yeah, and can I interrupt you? The golfer was ticketed, and the baseball players were just questioned and asked to get, wait for, excuse me.
Yeah, and I got that about the golfer, yeah. But, you know, I think it brings up that bigger question, and I know at one point we decided that this is the way we would use our parks, and we would limit the activity. But I think a lot of us have heard some questions about Town Point Park and how it's closed off, other than designated activities. And I'd like us to relook at that, to see if we could make these facilities more available to people kind of on a spontaneous.
Maybe we could carve out a couple of minutes at the, I know the retreat's going to get pretty busy, but to talk about some of that, because if you go down that road too far, but it becomes too spontaneous, then people who are programmed enough get pushed off. Right. Just, would you have to strike a balance in there somewhere?
I think there are probably some best practices in other cities that we can learn from.
I mean, the park is open. It's not closed.
No, but there are, you know, activities, just like, you know, that, for instance, you can't play baseball unless you've got a rubber and, you know, a field, and, you know, just pickup games like that, rugby, soccer, they ought to be able to be played spontaneously.
Where, in the park?
Yeah, in our parks.
You know, you're saying that.
Our parks, our green spaces, yeah.
And none of our parks, you can't.
Yeah, I mean, from what I understand, clearly Town Point.
I mean, where you got, you got stuff in the ground that comes up, and you got ballots and things that protrude above ground at Town Point Park, so I think that's a little different. But you can go to most parks, you see guys playing soccer, doing things, and I've never seen the police arrested about it.
I'm not sure what's big, I mean, what you're talking about at Town Point, but I think it's something we need to talk about.
I mean, well, yeah, I know it goes back to those folk that God did, the one he ran against Barkley, talking about, should people be allowed to utilize Town Point Park or frisbee and stuff like that? But if you go down there on the weekend, you'll see people doing those exact same things, and nobody's ever bothered. You know, it's when you start to trying to program things, when they have other events, I think that that becomes the bigger issue. But I see people out there on the weekends with the kids, and they throw frisbees, they throw balls, they roll around, because the terrain is not even. And so I've seen people even grill out there, you know, and so, and I've never seen anybody to tell them that.
Ever seen anybody practicing the vault shots?
No, but you.
Somebody might could hear.
All right, okay.
Do you have anything?
Well, a few things.
Is he breathing?
Well, I guess, more so a couple of PSAs, I guess. One, you know, we'd be, I guess we're ready to go on vacation, and so for most of you, you know, we have the Jazz Festival next week, next weekend, so that's the 20th and 21st. So guys get an opportunity to come out to the Jazz Festival.
I said, "And if not, you want our tickets."
I don't need your tickets. Secondly, we, the bulldozers are starting to mobilize on the site for the CROC Center, so they've done the silver fencing, and in three weeks, the bulldozers will start doing work. The first week in August, looking at doing another groundbreaking, but the bulldozers will have been, you know, turning earth, like I said, in the next couple of weeks. We were very fortunate through, I guess, the support of Josh Darden, that the territory looked at the funds that were left and realized that Norfolk was going to be the last CROC Center that would be built, and that would bring the total to 27 CROC Centers. And we were able to, the territory gave us another $12 million for our site. And so that allowed us to expand the facility, add another swimming lane, enhance the cafe, and enhance the Coach Watch Theater in terms of seating. And so we're, I think, about 88,000 square feet now. We got a new commander, commander, that captain, actually, that took over Major Rec Line. And this guy was out in Texas, and he actually built one of these CROC Centers out in Texas. So he has a lot of experience in terms of, from the day you start turning earth to the day you open the doors. And so a very aggressive schedule in terms of trying to get this thing up and the people inside of it. But again, it's been a long time coming, so I do want to thank the council's support, manager and staff support for getting us to this point, because I know it's been a long time coming. One of the other things I just want to say, you know, oftentimes, we try to let other council persons within their wards work out difficult issues before it actually makes it way, it makes its way to us. This, today, we have, I don't know, a few things that are on the agenda. For me, and I'll say this as, I guess, as nice as I can say it, the issue with this Mojo Bones establishment, I sat at this table when we vetted that a few, it might have been four, I don't know, four years ago, how many years ago it was? And the individual came to the body and understood the hours of operation. Going back just a little further than that, before I got on this council, there are a lot of people that did a lot of work to change the social and economic climate of Ocean View. There were a lot of businesses, good and bad, and I say good and bad because there were people that frequented those businesses that some thought were bad, and there were people that didn't frequent those businesses. But we eradicated those businesses and made promises to people in terms of the investment that was made years ago. Now you have folk that are continually to move into the Ocean View area. Some are moving because of the promises that were made. And so for me, the issue becomes simply what we've applied in other areas. When we grandfathered most of these convenience stores, we said to these places that you can't, you no longer can serve single servants. And any other convenience store that opened had to heed to those policies. And so we get a convenience store to open after they understood the rules, and then come back and say, "Look, you know, I can't compete." You know, to me, then if we overturn that, then, you know, then you got to do it for all of those establishments that you issued that commitment for. And so I feel the same way as relates to this establishment. I don't confess to try to speak for the people of Ocean View, but I do say this, it's going to take more than 30 people, or 100 people for that matter. I would love to see a petition from the residents of Ocean View, so everybody knows what's going on, not just, you know, a specific league, you get 12, you may get 20, you may get 25, you may get two. But I think that the entire community should know what's going on, because when you open that Pandora's Box, you cannot put the genie back in the box. You cannot pick and choose who you want to do business with. Now, there are people that moved in this community because of the standards that folk put in place. And I know some people say, "Well, you know, things are different in Ocean View now." But I still think that there are a lot of people that need to understand, that have made significant investments in that community up and down Ocean View, that need to understand. If you do it for one, you will have to do it for all. And you can't pick and choose who you want to do business with. And so that's my two cents. And, you know, if they want to do, I've seen them when they did Bay Oaks Park, they came down here with a petition, and again, we work for the people, but at the end of the day, we work for all the people. And so to meet something like this is extremely important, because it could change the landscape, and it could change the work overnight. And we're not going to add any more police officers down there once you open that Pandora's Box and not cover other parts of the city.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's all I got.
I think we got a Mojo Bones, we're going to talk about that here in a second, I think, if the council wants. But now that you've opened the door, Angela, do you have anything?
Just one thing. I got an email, and I don't know if everybody else got it, because I couldn't tell from my email, but it was regarding bus access to the Social Security Administration building. And I think, is that the same building, Sarah, that you were talking about last week, where there was a, the connections didn't quite work or something? That was a different building? Okay, well, that's an issue. This bus connection issue that this commission for persons with disabilities, they've petitioned HRT, or they're trying to work with HRT to get that resolved. But can we get maybe an update or some information on this one? And the issue that came up last?
They came to HRT.
Okay. I just don't know where.
And they were planning, we come here. We asked them to bring it to the council.
Okay, all right.
Because there is a problem, people trying, with disabilities, trying to get off the bus and back to.
Okay.
House is more of a long-term strategy.
Okay, so we got two different.
We would expect.
Okay, all right.
We would very come back to.
All right, very good. Well, if they're coming, okay, I'm good. That's all I have.
Couple of things. Do we know when the retreat is going to be?
We need to pick a date, like, somebody needs to give us some alternatives here.
Marcus, sure, typically, we do the latter part, we offer to you the latter part of September, working with the Breck.
Well, okay, here we are, it is July, so some of us have got schedules, we're going to try to keep to. Can you get, like, you know, when are they going to let us know, like, tonight, when the alternatives might be? Let people start, there are only a couple of weekends in there, and I take it to go back out to Smithfield is okay? Does that, we have issues there? Would you just tell me yours is a timing issue?
I just want your dates on the calendar.
Right, okay.
Me too.
We'll have some to you tomorrow.
Okay, sure. All right. You're not trying to get out of it, are you, bud?
Also, wanted to just, I don't know how we're doing with this, but I'm seeing the bike signs appearing throughout the city on telephone poles where future bike lanes are going to be going. I think it's to introduce it to the citizens, whether it's planning, Public Works, or Communications. I think not everybody understands what's going on, so when bike lanes are being put in on areas that have just been resurfaced or sharrows, we probably need to send letters to the people who live there, because some of them do lose parking spots out of this, or lanes get smaller because of it, and it bothers them, and they don't understand that this is actually a good thing for the city. But we might want to do that. I've tried my best to share and educate, like, some of my constituents have called to complain, they still don't agree with them, but hopefully I've got them at least to understand that this is, you know, a little bit better for the city. PH1 that's coming up on Nick Steiner, we had discussed this a couple of weeks ago, and I wanted to point out that I believe in that presentation, we were told that the hours were 11 to 6 o'clock. And then last night, in the presentation that was given to our, at our task force meeting, it was, it said 9 o'clock, and apparently she had changed her application from when that was first presented to us. I think it threw Barkley and I off a little bit, because we thought it was 11 to 6. I just wanted to point out that the real issue with that is it is a rezoning issue. We are being asked to rezone a property from residential to commercial for her to be able to sell alcohol. It's not that probably anybody's really against the alcohol part of it, it's just that we're now changing zoning on that. And then finally, some sidewalk issues. I've called in a couple of constituent complaints about sidewalks that have been buckling, and Public Works is always really good in getting out and fixing them, but there is an issue that when it occurs on a driveway apron area, that the resident is responsible for it, or the owner of the property. The problem with that is there are a lot of properties down in Ocean View, and probably this is happening in Park Place where there are vacant lots. And when we have people that are using those sidewalks as either transportation, walking back and forth, running for leisure, and you have a property owner who doesn't care about that, I don't know if there's any zoning or code, or code, or, excuse me, code issue that requires them to fix a sidewalk, but if not, I would hope that we could just work on, particularly those vacant lot areas, and fixing those sidewalks. I know some of it is utilities, but I was just a little bit disappointed to find out that we can't just go in and fix it, that we require the owners to do that. But I think that there's some heavier traffic areas that we probably should fix, just because they create dangerous situations for people that are running or on bikes.
Is it possible to do it like we do the grass cutting? If the owner of the property, even if it's a vacant piece of property, if the owner of the property doesn't fix it, we fix it, and then we put a lien against the property for the cost of the repair?
Well, I know we had a similar situation in Denby Park years ago, where we had a collaborative effort to try to address just this. So what I'll do is talk with staff about how we approached it in Denby Park, if there was a way that we could do it here also.
Thank you. That's it. A couple of things. There is an hour tonight, you have seen this Early Childhood Education Board Appointment Resolution that Breck circulated with the names of the professionals who have agreed to serve on the Early Childhood Board. If anybody has any questions, you know, please let us know. There is some time concerns about this, Breck, right? They are for the grant requirement, that's right. So we tried to get this out to you to make sure that you had a chance to review it, and I hope there are no, I hope there are no objections. Okay, all right, that's, that'll be in addition, that'll be a walk-on. We tried to get some times from you to when we might discuss appointments, and we use the 17th as one alternative, at least one, maybe two of you will not be here on the central. the seventeenth. Does anybody, and by the way, we weren't scheduled to meet on the seventeenth. And so that was just a date. And I've talked to the manager, and he really doesn't have, he wasn't planning for an agenda for that day. I'm available on that day or even on the following week is the twenty-fourth, which we have scheduled, for sure. If we could come early, because we have a whole series of appointments that need to be made on some pretty major boards. Does that work, the twenty-fourth, if we start, if we came in, you know, at three o'clock or something like that, instead of meeting twice, instead of meeting on the seventeenth down to the twenty-fourth, if we just met on the twenty-fourth but came an hour or so early, a couple hours? Is that okay?
Well, only if there are things that need to be addressed in our committees, because we have some things that have been put off in the committees. And if that means we're not gonna meet, we need to talk about that.
Yeah.
Can we vote committee up?
Fine. I'm good on that, I just, we need to do it. But Tommy, you know.
I don't care.
I thought we were gonna look at committee structure.
Committee, we can look at all that stuff on the twenty-fourth, but I mean, we need to look at the committees. I don't mean the city council committees. I meant like the planning commission, the housing authority, I mean, all of those committees that, the economic development authority, there's a whole bunch of this stuff that is, okay? So is the twenty-fourth okay? And we'll try to work, we had two really good committee meetings today, by the way, and with a lot of stuff out there, I'd hate to get in the way of some stuff moving forward on the committee meetings, but.
Does that mean we're not meeting next week?
That means unless you want to, I mean, because, I mean, we could all, well, it seems to me if the twenty-fourth works for everybody, rather than have the manager bring the staff in and.
Let's just back everything up so we have plenty of time.
Right. Okay. I'm glad to stay all night.
I gotta start at noon.
I'm glad that's.
I could do early on the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, just to meet at two instead of three.
Yeah. That's fine.
All right. And we'll start at two with the committee meetings, and then everybody will show up here, the rest of the council members will be here at four for the appointments. Is that okay? All right. And Breck will get out to you in plenty of advance, and not just in the drop box, but I mean, you know, get them, get them in emails both ways, so everybody has those boards and vacancies and that sort of stuff. Terry, is that okay? Is that all right with everybody?
Yeah, the only thing I'd ask for again is, I just really think we ought to put this on our calendar and not scramble around trying to get it done. I think every three months or whatever it is, I know Breck is totally in favor of this. I mean, it's, we have way too many of these committee people that are serving and serving and serving because we can't get around to reappointing them. I just think it makes them inconsistent. This is a good start, but.
Every time you do that, somebody's not available and it gets pushed off.
But if you did it on a meeting when we're supposed to be here, then they know. And they know that if they're not gonna be there available, then they don't get to put a vote in for the, that committee. I mean, I think that's fair.
All right, let me get back, can we do it on the twenty-fourth, okay?
Tuesday of every quarter?
Yeah.
Something like that.
Can we talk about that on the twenty-fourth?
Let's see, if there is a, we have a request from, on R9, that it be continued. Some people are trying to sign up. Breck wants to know if we should sign them up. Is the matter, are people agreeable to continue this matter? Is that okay? All right, then we won't sign anybody up then for R9. Okay.
I wanna thank this council. The city manager and I and staff participated for several months in the shared services with the city manager of Chesapeake and the city councilman and the city manager of Virginia Beach and the city councilman, came up with a good solution, and we're passing a resolution tonight to try to figure out ways we can save money by working together as well as improve the services we give our citizens. And none of, we've had no pushback from this council and some of the other councils, you know, that we're experiencing a little turf war. And this is a very innocuous, open-minded thing that's really working, and I appreciate, you know, not getting micromanaged. Everything has to come through the council, but I think we've been very open-minded and progressive about trying to start a regional cooperation. Just wanna thank the manager and staff and the council for buying in.
Okay. I just wanna pass that one article. This was out of the Richmond Times-Dispatch on July 1st. It's an article about poverty in the Richmond region, and it's an article about their anti-poverty task force. I want to, when we get together on the twenty-fourth, just to show our hands, who thinks we ought to have an anti-poverty task force. But take a look at this, I think it's really good stuff. And otherwise, I leave it alone.
I have a question about the early childhood learning advisory board, just looking at the members, the advisory board members. The only person from the schools is a superintendent. There's, I mean, there's no teachers.
These were, when the council adopted the ordinance, approving the board and the bylaws, these were the required members. So initially, the board has the ability to expand the membership, and in fact, I think they would like to expand the membership, but they have to come together first and meet and organize themselves, and then they can vote to amend their bylaws to expand.
To expand, okay. Because I think, I mean, I think we need people here who are possibly educators, education.
Yeah. And this, you know, this superintendent very well may delegate that to someone.
Right.
Sure.
Okay. Frank, and Sarah Constance Shores has come off the.
Right, I was gonna say, we can skip that. I do need to clarify the issue with Nick Steiner, and I apologize for the confusion we created. Their original request was to stay open and serve until nine. They modified it, and so the request will be for you tonight is to stay open until six, and that is reflected in the ordinance. I checked.
And to begin at eleven?
Correct. They could originally ask for from five AM till nine PM, and then they've modified. It is a rezoning, and the rezoning is necessary in order to grant the special exception. But I will not do the presentation on these.
You're saying that it's a rezoning issue?
Yes.
I'm hearing two things. I thought it was a.
Are you talking about not Mojo?
No, I'm not talking about Mojo, I'm talking about.
Right. The property was rezoned residential, probably.
Twenty years ago.
Yeah. And it, there was, there's always been a restaurant there. Another owner took it over as a breakfast place, and she now wants to sell alcohol there. In order to do that, the special exception requires it to be zoned, rezoned as commercial and it's residential. It's always been able to operate as a restaurant and breakfast place. When the other, the previous one closed, then she bought it and had to reopen it. Now she wants to sell alcohol, but it requires us to rezone the whole property.
What is the issue with the folk in Ocean View?
They don't want it rezoned. It's part of the plan of Norfolk.
But it's a business there already. I mean, does anybody live anywhere in the property? I mean, is there like some upstairs?
No, 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 no.
There's no upstairs apartments or anything like that?
Not on this one, no. That was a tough one.
Was that one of those inadvertent things that happened?
This was a conscious decision.
I think it was nineteen eighty-seven.
It goes way back.
Okay, it goes back to changing the general plan that I think made all of these uses non-conforming, and so that's, it's a non-conforming use, so you'd need this, you know, this rezoning, right?
That's correct.
I believe there's a goal there, too, to move commercial off of the beach side in some parts of Ocean View and kind of focus it more on what they call nodes. And this is not a node. This area is supposed to be.
It could be, but it wasn't designated.
Yeah, yeah. It was to move it somewhere else. Across the street would be commercial.
So the community is okay with her continuing to operate as a eatery?
Correct. They follow that.
They don't have the zone changed.
The community indicated that they had no problem with the alcohol, but they did not want the rezoning, and it's exactly as Mr. Smigle indicated, you cannot grant the special exception without the rezoning. So that's where you're in the opposition from the neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, the first one of these items is Mojo Bones. This is the item you saw in the paper today. It is an existing eating and drinking, or, excuse me, an existing entertainment establishment of the West Ocean View neighborhood. It's the little red dot in the strip commercial center. These are images of the establishment. Currently, they are open from ten AM to eleven PM, Sunday through Thursday, and from ten AM till twelve AM, Fridays and Saturdays. And these are the standard hours that are applied throughout Ocean View. What they're looking to do is open a little earlier in Ocean, in the morning. And what they had originally asked for was to start selling alcohol at nine AM. Mr. Rockwell, the applicant, has now indicated he would like to revise that to eleven AM, which would be consistent as an opening hour with the other establishments in Ocean View. What you have out here is what he had originally requested, that is what is in the ordinance. I see Mr. Pishko checking for. But we did get the request after this was all put together, that he now would like to change that opening hour to eleven AM. The other thing he wants to do is change the entertainment. He wants to drop the disc jockey and be able to add some additional people to the bands. He offers blues music on the weekends, and then the seating is not changed. Our recommendation to staff was denial, and that denial is based on city council's policy regarding hours in the Ocean View neighborhood. City council has been very consistent with applying this policy since it began in two thousand and four, I believe. Planning Commission also recommended denial by a unanimous six to nothing vote citing council's policy regarding hours as the basis. What I will acknowledge is that Mr. Rockwell has gone out to tour a number of the civic leagues, and a number of the civic leagues have supported the request for the longer hours. And last night at the community meeting, we had about seventy-five people, and I think the majority of the people who were there were okay with the later hours, although there is still not unanimity on that issue.
Frank, when this first went before planning last year, it actually tied three to three.
Correct.
There were planning commissioners that did support it, and then it changed in that period of time. Is it because we changed some planning commissioners?
No. The change vote, planning, planning commission had support for it the last time, and staff also recommended support the last time because we had letters of support from all of the civic leagues in the Ocean View area with one exception, and that was Willoughby. Willoughby was the only one that was opposed to. All the others said they supported the later hours. Got to city council, and city council rejected that special exception request for the later hours, citing that you wanted to continue to have the policy that's been in effect. And so based on that, we did not recommend approval of it this time, nor did planning commission.
We didn't vote on it last time.
It got withdrawn.
We asked the occupant to, I mean, the applicant to withdraw it. I have a statement that I'm gonna state later when we vote on this, but I do wanna address a few things, if it's okay, that the vice mayor made comments to. If you look in the packet, the applicant, because of some comments that a council member made about that civic leagues don't speak on behalf of everybody in the community, the applicant did go out and get a petition and has about six hundred signatures there in the, it's actually in the packet. And if you look at it, it actually says the address of the person that's there, and you'll see that the majority of them are in Norfolk. There are some people from other states there, people that visited and liked the establishment and signed up, but that is there. We have five civic leagues, all in Ward Five, where this policy is in effect, that have all been around long enough and were in favor of the original unwritten policy on this, who now have come back and said that they are okay with this. All five of those civic leagues are very active civic leagues. One of the presidents is here, Vic Yorkevick. It was probably about thirty-five people at that meeting when they voted in favor of it. Bayview Civic League has over fifty people usually at every one of their meetings. The East Ocean View Civic League had forty-nine the night that they voted on it. These are very active civic leagues. The president of the East Ocean View Civic League lives in East Beach. He's one of those new people. He understands that one of the things that is prohibiting restaurant growth in Ocean View is this policy, and we're not seeing applications for quality restaurants because people don't want to come down and invest their business because of this provision. The, we also, the Willoughby Civic League is an interesting issue because although it's been stated that they voted against it, we found out last night from some Willoughby Civic League members that they actually never took a vote on it. Don Rockwell went and made a presentation to the Civic League, but then they decided to not vote on it or take a position on it at all. They basically just brushed it off. So really, the five civic leagues there, in addition to a civic league on Little Creek Road, the North Camilla Acres Civic League voted for it, where this provision also affects. In addition, the old Ward Five partnership, which is not my organization, voted in favor of supporting Mojo Bones. That's my predecessor's organization, came out in support of Mojo Bones doing this. And so when you talk about how much more can we get, last night, we decided to do an Ocean View task force meeting, which generally has invited members, but we decided to allow people to advertise this more of a public hearing out there, and we did have quite a bit of crowd there. I counted closer to a hundred, but I'll stick with seventy-five if that's what you like, Frank. And the fact is that the only people who came out opposed to this were my predecessor and his regular people. There were five people who spoke against it, but when the owner came up to speak, it got a round of applause from the audience. They're very supportive of this. It is asking for, the owner has agreed that an eighteen-month probation period would be acceptable here, and the Ocean View group, the citizens here, are asking for this opportunity to show that we can do this. And, you know, Barclay and I have already decided, whether this passes or fails, that there probably needs to continue to be more community conversation so that if more applicants come, it's not a pick and choosing thing, but if there are standards, we, we might wanna talk about continuing that, but starting that transition and that growth. And I think the argument about the single sales is oranges and apples when it comes to this, and that those are small negotiations that happen with that owner, where in this case, this is a major deal breaker for a lot of these businesses. And when somebody says to me that these owners knew when they got down there, last night we heard from Sandy at Captain Groove's as well as from Mojo Bones owner, that when they were coming into Ocean View, they were promised by my predecessor that they would be allowed to eventually extend their hours. They both got up and said that. And I think that there is some confusion here. There's also some inconsistencies with this policy. My predecessor also said in the paper today that there was a special situation with the peer, and they allowed that to happen. And so if we are allowing these inconsistencies, whether it's Azelia Inn, we just voted on Pizza Chef and allowed them, they changed their layout, all of those owners knew that this rule was in effect, but because of some kind of grandfathered thing that, you know, said, oh, well, since they're grandfathered, they can go ahead and expand their restaurant and change it, but we're gonna go ahead and ignore the policy. But anybody else who comes down there, we're gonna say, no, you can't do it. You can't. And so this guy's been there for three years, hasn't had any major code violations, no fire code violations, no calls. There are establishments that are grandfathered, they get calls all the time, and they have not been held accountable because of the grandfathered thing. And so these people are just asking for a fair opportunity with the community support on allowing Ocean View to move forward. And, you know, I say if there's people that are down in that community, we had, that crowd last night was not stacked with bartenders and waitresses. These were Ocean View people who live in the community who came out and said, we had seventy-five-year-old women standing up and saying they support Mojo Bones being able to do this. And these are people who were here, the old Ocean View, like I was, thirty-three years I've lived in Ocean View. So I know what it was like, okay? And we're not saying that that policy did not work, but it's just time to move forward. So that's, I'm just gonna, and that's it. And I have comments later.
The conversation was about Mojo Bones. And when I, the petition that you have is about Mojo Bones. The petition should be, again, I just want everybody, look, we work for the people. If the will of the people in Ocean View is to lift, okay, this standard that the past councils have put in place to protect the integrity of that community and grow that community, if that's what they want to do, then I'm for it. But again, why, with all this time that has passed, you're the council person out there, Barclay is the council person out there. Go get a petition of the people, not just the people in the restaurant, let the people in Ocean View know what this means. Don't just speak Mojo Bones because it's just not about Mojo Bones.
Well, with the original, the original request a year ago, and Frank can tell you this, Mona Lisa Pizza was also on that request. So every single one of those civic leagues, when they voted on it, which is on the other side of Ocean View across from East Beach, every single one of those civic leagues voted in favor of not just Mojo Bones, but also Mona Lisa. So it was two restaurants now on completely different sides of Ocean View, right across the street from East Beach, which every, almost every single board member now of the East Ocean View Civic League is an East Beach resident who said that they supported this. And that restaurant, the petition, was a. And that restaurant, the petition, was a banner that was on public display that said, go to this website and you can sign up for that. So that was people passing by in favor of that. And so, you know, Anthony, I've heard you say that you generally, when it comes to council members that represent that area, I'm the only one on council that lives north of Little Creek Road, grew up in Ocean View, and understands basically what's going on there. And I'm asking you, out of respect to me as the representative of that area, and I'm the one who will suffer the consequences for that if I decide to run again and this does not work out, I'm asking you to respect me and, and my voice for my constituents in saying that they want this. And it's the same thing that you guys did for Randy back in 1993. You weren't on it. But in 1993, he was a first-year council member, and he put this provision in, and they've been operating that way since. It's been 18 years, and times have changed. There's no more, the zoning now does not allow for strip clubs to come in anymore. We've changed new rules on that, so you're not, when anybody says, oh, we're going to open up the floodgates for strip clubs to come back in there, no, we're not, because you can't do that anymore in Norfolk. We've changed that since then. These are restaurants, just like in Ghent, just like on Granby Street, just like anywhere else in your ward, all of ward, but my ward, for some reason, in my ward, I'm not allowed to have restaurants that can open up after 12 o'clock. Why am I getting penalized? Why are my business owners being penalized for this?
Look, I'm not, listen, I, I've been at the table long enough that, and I, I watched the, we had a robust discussion years ago as it relates to Bale's part, okay? And the people in Ocean View came out and their voices were...
It wasn't Ocean View, it was Norfolk. That was more than just Ocean View that signed that petition.
Okay, but what I'm saying to you is simply this. It's, it's bigger than Mojo Bones, okay? You're looking at Mojo Bones, one establishment. I don't think, you know, for me, I just don't think it's asking too much to inform the citizens that do not go to the civic leagues, you know, get the information out so people can understand what this means. That's all I'm saying. I, I'm not against you, but I don't want to sit and create, make a decision that will hurt the integrity and the fabric of that community. That community is still fragile. And like I said, there are a lot of, again, you can, you know the community? Yes, you do. That's your community. I'm not disputing that. But I have fiduciary responsibility to make sure that, at the end of the day, something that will turn back the clock, that everybody understands what this body is doing. And that's all I'm saying. So let's not make it about Mojo Bones and just make it about the people of Ocean View.
It's not, it's not about Mojo Bones. They just happen to be the applicant.
And if the people in Ocean View want this, I'm fine with this. I'm not going to stand in a way of Ocean View being the community that it should be, ought to be, and worked hard to be. But what I'm saying to you is, it's not about Mojo Bones for me.
Well, when you, when you come to me and you ask me to support a 7-Eleven in Broad Creek because Broad Creek people want a 7-Eleven, and I said, Anthony, because your people want it, I'm going to support you on it, and now, all of a sudden, I, I get it. I see where this is going. How many phone calls did you receive today from Ronnie Boone?
Oh, that's not...
I think it runs from under there.
It's my ward also, and I was...
About Mojo Bones?
My, my problem, and I guess I say that instead of that, it's kind of a knee-jerk reaction. We've got personality conflicts now, obviously. There's people that like certain people, people that don't. I, you know, I think we're getting close to the time when we, we need to relax this rule, this rule. But I think before we do it, we don't do it as a knee-jerk reaction to the pros and cons, or who's for it, who likes. We need to put together a cross-section of the community. You and I meet with them and try to craft the regulations that they all live with from Little Creek Road. If I can, I can frame an issue, Tommy. I can go down to South Bayview and say, do you want, it's not fair because this, this guy is grandfathered, this guy is not, don't you think we ought to make it fair? And I can get them to say, yeah, they would. Or I could go down there and say, you remember how the bars and the strip clubs were or whatever down here 10 or 15 years ago? If we relax this, then the whole thing comes back, because we do it for one, we do it for everybody, because by the time we open, fan doors, box is gone. So I would think, you know, and we could shoot to achieve this by the first of the year, to meet and, and frame something that all the members of the community, or cross-section that we could choose to people, and say, is this what you want? Let's give it some thought. Let's, let's go through it. Let's understand what happens if you do, what's happening if you don't, and be open-minded and try to come up with something that works.
Barclay, we already have that. It's called a special exception, and we do this all across the city.
I'm just not prepared to...
But are we going to do that then for every community and...
Communities are different.
But we, but, but you can't tell me they're different. Ocean View is not an island, Barclay. We, we're part of the city of Norfolk. And when we start treating communities different in that way, I mean, is Ghent not fragile? I don't understand that. And so we vote on these, every single week, we vote on these. Every single week, we vote on these. And, and I don't understand where this continues to come from. It's been 18 years. There are no more strip clubs down in Ocean View. It's done. And these people want some restaurants down there, and, and all the restaurants that you're talking about, they already have this special exception and can do it.
Well, let me ask you something. At 11 o'clock at night, is it a restaurant or is it a bar?
You heard the argument last night that people are eating later.
Is it a restaurant or a bar at 12:00?
I don't know. What do you, when do you eat dinner? It depends on who you are.
I'll, I'll give you a prime example, Tommy. You're right.
Look, we're going to have to cut this off in a minute.
This is a good debate, but, but listen, Tommy, I'll just, hold on, man. Let me, let me just one last thing.
Wait a minute. Hold on a second. Let me make a comment, okay? We've got to get to this animal care and adoption center thing here before some people explode.
Okay.
So we're going to take just a couple more minutes, and then we're going to move on.
Tommy, you, you brought up a great point, and you said, you know, it's a special exception process, and we get these special exceptions out all the time. And Mr. Riddick was one that said this some time ago. You know, we need to stop giving out these special exceptions like it's water. Now, we did that. We gave out all these special exceptions, and one day, you know, we, we had this goal of, of creating what we want to see on Granby Street, okay? And one day we looked up, and we had given all these special exceptions, and overnight, these restaurants that people talked about people eating late became nightclubs and became something else. And it took us, I don't know how many years, to put the, the, the genie back in the, in the bottle, to, to get some type of decorum, to get some, to get our arms around what was going on down there. Because we had lost, basically had lost control of Granby Street at one time. And so don't tell me that, you know, just by having a special exception process, that that protects us, because it didn't protect us. And we had to be the bad guy for many years, you know, in terms of putting the genie back in the bottle, you know? And we're still doing that. And that took about eight, nine years, about eight years to, to do that. So all I'm saying is, if this is what you want, I, I respect you. I respect your community. But all I'm saying, could you at least have the debate? We, we do have the, the experience that, you know, we've done this, and this is what happened on the other side of extending these special exceptions the way that we did. And we, we try to, you know, look at it on a case-by-case basis, but at the end of the day, I, I just think that, before I go down that road, me personally, I just want to get the, a consensus from the community. And it's your community. I'll follow your lead, but at the end of the day, all I'm saying to you is, once you let that genie out of the box, you can't put them back in. You cannot pick and choose who you want by business.
I just have one more thing to say. It's very quick. Yeah. You know, I think we've done enough with vetting this. I was against Mojo Bones when they first came to me, and I told the owner, if he was able to get the community behind him, because I didn't think he was going to be able to, that then I would support it, and he did. He proved me wrong, and he went out and did it. I don't know of any other person that would have gone to every single civic league and asked them for their support and be able to get it. And yeah, you can frame it however you want, but I was at a couple of those meetings. There was open and honest dialogue with the citizens there about what this could do, what it could not do. And then, Anthony, if this is something that you think, you know, special exception's an issue, then I'll agree with Paul Riddick then, and we need to make this a policy across the city. And every single special exception that we have come before us, let's follow the same thing as Ward Five then, and let's start making it an equal playing field across the city. And then you get the bar task force up and go in again, and get them in those establishments that are causing problems, and start pulling those special exceptions, but that's not happening.
Okay. All right. Quickly, I hope you won.
Going for days.
I would can't add. Sorry.
The next item that we have for you to vote on tonight is a request for Lafayette Boulevard pedestrian commercial and residential overlay development certificate by Deals at 3230 Tidewater Drive. This is the old record store. It was there, it is in the Fairmont Park neighborhood. This is the building that it is in. The property is zoned commercial, so the use is allowed. It is within the Lafayette Boulevard PCRO, which does require development certificate for any building modifications, and they are proposing building modification. This is what the building looks like today. We've had an active code enforcement case. I know the vice mayor has spoken with me about this several times. They are doing a lot of renovations on this building, and what is proposed is, this would be the facade that is, that is proposed, that has been reviewed and approved through the design review process. They did need a variance because unlike all of our other PCOs, this particular PCO does not allow for any modification in building placement based on the current site location of the business or of the building. It requires buildings to be set back at least seven feet from the sidewalk. This is built right at the edge of right of way. This was taken to the BZA on May 17th, and they did grant the variance, which means the building placement is now considered conforming. Three waivers are required for this particular PCRO. The ordinance says that you can only have, you can, can only have one curb cut off of Tidewater Drive. This particular establishment has two curb cuts, both of which have been permitted by the city. And so based on that, their recommendation was to grant that waiver. Parking area right now is not landscaped. It's an existing parking lot. What they are proposing is some limited landscaping in this area, where it is not, currently not landscaped, but it would not meet the full landscape ordinance provisions.
Is that the back? I can't...
This is Tidewater Drive right here.
Okay, okay. All right.
And this would be along the front is where they would have the, the landscaping.
So why is it limited?
The rest of this is already completely paved. And so what we're looking at is, is what we could do, that we, we consider to be a reasonable approach for this, and it still maintain all of the parking requirements for the business. The other waiver was for a freestanding sign. This sign currently exists. This is the sign that is proposed. Staff recommended approval of this, including all three of the requested waivers because of existing site conditions, recognizing we will get some landscaping that does not exist today, though not the full extent that would be required by the ordinance. The planning commission recommended approval on a four to three vote. The majority acknowledged the existing conditions and the improvements that were being made to the building, as well as to the parking area. The minority were fine with the waivers for the driveways and landscaping, but they did not support granting the waiver for the freestanding sign, saying that we needed to get rid of that sign.
They didn't like the new sign?
Correct.
Was this presented to the Fairmont Park Civic League?
Fairmont Park has been very involved in this particular project from the beginning.
And did you get a petition from everybody outside of Fairmont Park Civic League and ask them if they're in favor of this?
I did not receive anything from the Civic League on this one. I just know from speaking with the president of the Civic League that they have been involved in this from the beginning.
So why, why is the sign necessary?
What we looked at as a staff level was the recognition that in other PCOs where there has been a freestanding sign, that existed council has granted that waiver. It's been done in Ghent, it's been done in rearview, and we said, based on that, we would recommend support of it based on the past precedent.
I don't understand why we can't force them to do more landscaping.
You can, you just simply don't have to grant the waivers.
Now, we're still working with them.
We're still working with them isn't what I'm voting on. I'm voting on the landscaping as it is now, as proposed.
And Frank, am I correct? If the waivers are not granted, then they can develop as of right and conforming with all of these aspects.
They would not be able to approve the, the modifications to the exterior. They're still going to need that, because they would be able to do everything else as of right. It's the building modifications that are triggering the, the need for the development statement.
So the landscaping required, I mean, they're using what they have now for landscaping without digging up cement? Is that basic, what you're saying?
No, they will be removing parking. Can you pull that?
Okay. All right.
They are going to be removing parking. The ordinance requires that 10% of the total parking area be landscaped.
Okay.
And what they're proposing to do is to take these parking spaces out, expand that island so that we could get street trees in this area to help soften the appearance as you go down Tidewater Drive. They were not proposing to pull up additional park skate.
So what percentage would that be? If we normally require 10? I don't understand why we're not requiring 10.
This would be maybe 3% or 4%?
Yeah. I mean, do it right the first time.
Yeah, the difference is that when you, normal most projects, the concrete is not there. This is an existing, this is, I mean, we, we only have so much leverage because the concrete was, it was an existing parking lot, and they're working with their existing parking lot.
No, we have lots of leverage. It's just whether or not they want to pay for taking up the concrete. We have all the leverage we want. It's whether or not we choose to use it, whether or not we allow the developer to get away with three to four because he doesn't want to spend the extra money to take up the concrete. That's what this is about. Am I right?
It is, removing the concrete is expensive.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's, it's all about how much money they want.
But does it, does it, is it a deal killer? I mean, is that much money that...
That's an issue you would have to take up with Mr. Levin.
I mean, I, I guess that's my question. And I, and I agree with you, but I mean, is it a cost prohibitive thing that, I don't know.
I mean, I just, we set these standards, and then we say, oh, yeah, except for this time.
Well, no, not really, because it's already there. I mean, it's not a not really this, I, I don't see it as a not really this time. I see it as the person, the, the developer coming in and working with the space that they have there, and making something, especially in that dollar, dollar deals building, is much more attractive than the hole-in-the-roof building that's been there for the last 20 years, and utilizing what's there. If it was, if it was just land, like grass or something, and they had to put parking there and pour asphalt, then that would be different. But it's a big block of asphalt right now from the parking from the original building. I mean, is...
That's correct.
That's a good, okay. So...
Well, I, I still go back to the fact that we can let people get away with doing less than what we think is desirable, because golly gee, we're just so happy they're coming to develop a crummy-looking place, or we can do it right the first time.
I'm glad they're developing that crummy-looking place.
I'm glad they are too, but I would like them to develop it correctly. And we do have some leverage on this.
We've, we've, we've made them change a whole lot of things that, that originally they wouldn't do.
Not community garden mall. I mean, what's it going to be?
We, we, the vice mayor is correct. We have required multiple modifications to the building itself to come into conforming.
We're not upscale development.
We made them change the facade on the towel drive side to, you know, to provide windows. I mean, you know, that would have been a, a, just a brick wall like it is now, like it was actually when it was DJs, records, and tapes. So, I mean, we, we have pushed them.
The next item I have for you is an item that will be coming to you on July 10th. This is for another 7-Eleven. This one at 4803 Powhatan. What they're looking for is a special exception for 24-hour sale.
The 24th?
But Frank is...
July 24th. This one is not today.
Let's, let's talk about 24-hour sales, right?
Yes, sir.
When will alcohol be...
Alcohol would have to stop at midnight. Alcohol would have to stop at midnight.
When does it stop right now?
Midnight. This is a grandfathered establishment for ABC sales, so that's not before you. The only thing before you is the 24-hour sales. It is located in the Lambert's Point neighborhood, but it is immediately adjacent to the Larchmont neighborhood and to ODU. It's currently zoned to C1, which does permit the use. It does require the special exception. Again, that will have no impact on their ability to sell alcohol. This is the building as it looks today. It's an existing convenience store with a lot of pavement. It is a fully developed site. And the challenge you've got is that it is immediately adjacent to residential with virtually no space behind the building. What has been committed as part of this is very significant landscape improvements. They are pulling up the pavement on the south side of the building to install landscaping. They're also providing some additional landscaping on the north side of the building to enhance that buffer, and that will also include an opaque fence to shield views from the residential to the north of the site. And they're making some major facade improvements in order to improve the overall aesthetics of the community. At the public hearing, we have one citizen who wrote a letter of opposition. Proponents included the applicant, and ODU did come out and support this. Larchmont did not take a formal position on this. They said they were going to take no official position. They did do a survey. They received responses from 255 houses, or households, and they indicated to us that 64% of the households opposed, who responded, opposed the 24-hour sales. I understand that Lambert's Point, I didn't get anything in writing from them, but I did hear that Lambert's Point also voted to support the request. Staff recommended approval based on the committed site improvements so that it would provide an enhanced buffer from what exists now to the residential uses to the north and to the west, and also the idea of pulling up pavement to the south would improve stormwater issues, so overall would enhance environmental concern. Planning commission recommended approval on a four to two vote. The majority stated that their support was based on the commitment of the applicant for the site improvements. The minority indicated that they thought we just had, already had too many 7-Elevens in Norfolk. Yes, sir.
Frank, is that the owner that's been there forever?
It is the building, that's the old tiny giant that has been there forever.
Right. But I mean, the same operators?
I don't believe, I believe this is, I'd have to defer to Mr. Roman. I don't believe it's the same operator.
Mr. Mistraca owns a property. 7-Eleven would take over the operation. The gentleman that's operating it now is doing a good job. I don't know if he would continue operating, but he runs the 7-Eleven.
Has he been there for years?
The current operator's been there for a short period of time, maybe two to three years. It's had multiple operators.
So this has become a corporate 7-Eleven?
Probably be franchised as part of their general plan to franchise their operations. But it is an existing store, and we would basically be a lessy.
How many of your stores are 24 hours?
How many?
How many of your stores are 24 hours? Are they all 24 hours?
All 24 hours, yes.
All right. Would you like me to ask my question about the petition? I'm going to assume that that answers.
The Larchmont community?
Nothing from the Larchmont community?
No, the petition was the Larchmont.
The petition came from the Larchmont community.
The petition was relevant to the point that I brought up several months ago, and that is that when we have these legalese petitions brought up, nobody has a clue what they mean. And everybody from Larchmont came to me and said, we don't want alcohol 24 hours a day. I said, there's not alcohol 24 hours a day. They said, oh yeah, read the petition. One of those being an attorney didn't understand it. So I'm hoping that.
That's not unusual.
Yeah. So I, you know, I hope this is further, anyway. But I'd kind of like to hear, frankly, once again, the question here now that people understand what it means, because I think that we'd have a better majority and better opinion from the Larchmont community with clarification.
And I think that is why the.
Because it's basically apples to apples, except for now it's cleaned up and a better driveway.
I think that is why the Larchmont Civic League elected to take no position because we just eventually were able to advise.
Clarify.
Could actually be done here.
Okay.
Was the tiny giant 24 hours, right?
No.
Okay.
I spent a lot of money there. I spent a lot of money there. It's going way down.
If you want to go in and buy milk, they don't have milk. I mean, it's terrible.
We waited for you. Thanks.
Okay. This evening I'd like to talk to you about the city's animal care and adoption center, and also a proposal for the Norfolk Animal Advisory Board. In February, we had a committee meeting of the Communities and Public Safety Committee of Council.
We're not voting on anything tonight on this. This is just a presentation. So I can take a deep breath today.
There will be a representation at the bottom. There's no vote today.
Mine's for you.
And at that committee meeting, we discussed and called for the creation of an animal advisory board for the city. So in this presentation, I'm going to go through the accomplishments of the animal care center, the goals of the animal care center, and then the animal advisory board. Just to give you an idea of what's going on in the animal care center over some time, here's our intake for cats and dogs. And we can, we do have to take everything that comes to the door, so we do have goats and rabbits and snakes, but cats and dogs are the primary animals that come through the door. So you can see our cat population from 2006 to 2011 has increased rather rapidly, 27% increase, whereas our dog intake has gone down a little bit. Our overall intake of animals in the animal care center has gone up 11%. So we now, in the 2011, took in 5,600 animals. We now, in 2011, it is split 50% cats and 50% dogs. 2011 was a really good year for the animal care center. We had 1,847 adoptions. About half of those, 900, were cats, which was up a lot from prior years. We have a foster care program with 209 animals in foster care. And the save rate for animals, if you count all of our animals, and our save rate was 53%. There are different ways of calculating the save rate. If you include unadoptable animals, then our save rate would be 83%. Unadoptable is defined by the staff when animals come in the door and they look at the behavior of the animals, whether they're aggressive, whether they have illness or injury, whether they're feral. There's a whole variety of criteria that they go through in order to determine whether an animal's adoptable or not.
So if they're unadoptable, then are they potentially euthanized?
Generally, that's the case, yes. Our building is a former truck warehouse. It has a big bay with a very, very high ceiling where trucks were housed and worked on. It was renovated in 1996, and you'll see in a minute, we've done some more work on it. We do have a 20-year lease with the owner of the building, and it does house 75 cats and 75 dogs easily. Sometimes we put more in if we have to, but that's our capacity. Over this last year, with the help of the Friends of the Animal Care Center, which is a 501(c)(3) organization that raises money and gives that money to the animal care center, the outside of the building was overhauled, so it's easy to find. One of the complaints has been that it's been difficult to find the animal care center. The before picture is up on the right. The after picture is taking the exterior of the building and putting all the signage on it and the color so it's easy to find for people who are looking for our animal care center to find a pet for their home. On the interior, we also did renovations this past year. We did the chain link fences for the dogs. We designed a, the staff, I shouldn't say we, the staff did all this, a divider that goes through the dog park. And this, in each one of these letters are small pictures of the animals that have come through the center, everything. Dogs, cats primarily, but there's also rabbits and other things in those pictures. And we're using two of our former classrooms to actually do some of the work of the animal care center, evaluating the dogs, their behavior, as we talked about earlier. And we put the cats in a separate room so that they would be away from the stress of having a lot of activity around them when they first come in. Internal to the center, we've been needing to redo our cat housing. We have not been passing the state rules for cat housing. So the staff themselves designed a new cat facility, and it's been approved by the state. And we'll be purchasing those and installing them in August, so then we'll have a very up-to-date way to take care of the cats that come into the shelter. In the past, the Humane Society has done the study for us, for the city, in 2005, and we took a few excerpts out of their study. They have talked about the evaluation of behavior of animals in order to determine whether they're adoptable or not, and that is actually a difficult thing to do, and staff has to be trained and certified in order to be able to do that. I'd say one of the most difficult things at the shelter is the euthanasia. That is a difficult decision for the staff to make. It is something that both the volunteers and the staff working there have a very hard time doing personally themselves. We understand that when we need space, we do need space, and we need to care for the animals that are there in a very good way. So when we do, when that does have to happen, what we strive for is to do that in a very In terms of our statistical benchmarks, benchmarking us against others, there was a survey done in the, from the Maddie's Fund in 2008 of 80 of the country's most widely recognized and best-funded animal shelters. And we looked at that against our numbers at our animal care center. And here are the numbers for the 80 organizations and our 2008, 2011 numbers. And as you can see in our death rate at the center, in 2008, we were right what the average was. And then since that, 2011, we've improved. We reduced our death rate at the animal care center. Our adoption rate has also gotten better. It went from 26% in 2008 to 32% in 2011. And our reunions has gone up. It's higher than here, we'd like, but we'd like it to be much higher. Reunions is when an animal comes into the shelter and it has an owner, and we need to reunite that animal with their owner. Our euthanasia outcomes.
Anne, just so we can better understand. That particular, Paul, is all right if we interrupt now or just hold the questions at the end?
I think we do it now, yeah.
The Maddie's Fund, this particular slide has, does not involve you not looking at Portsmouth, Virginia Beach, Chesapeake. You're just looking at across the United States.
Across the United States.
And with the understanding that perhaps in New York City, it may be different than Norfolk.
Correct.
And in Colorado, maybe different than here.
Yes. I have some statistics for our area in the next couple of slides so that we can go local. This is looking big picture, and then we'll come and look more locally when it's happening.
So you're saying best-funded traditional, so that would not be a no-kill center?
That's not a no-kill center. It's typically humane societies and shelters like that, not municipal shelters. That's how it was defined in the study. The statistics down here relate to municipal shelters, and so municipal shelter rates, the average death numbers are usually higher because municipal shelters have to take in everything that comes through the door. And there are some ways, and I'm looking at an audience out here, this is a very complex subject, but there are some ways to reduce the number of animals that are coming through your doors. So you can say, you have to make an appointment to bring your animal in, which for some people, that's a barrier. So there's different ways, but in this particular case, these are traditional animal shelters, and we are comparing ourselves to a relatively higher bar than just another municipal shelter. But I have shelters in our area, and that's all. Get to that next. Our euthanasia outcomes over time, again, from 2006 to 2011, we've had a change. We've had some more cats coming in. Our euthanasia rate for cats has gone up. For dogs, it has declined. So overall, we have a, you can see our total has declined some from the very beginning. These are all, I should say, these are all statistics, every year, the statistics for all of these shelters have to be reported to the state. So everybody has numbers online on web that you can go and report and look at what our statistics are against other statistics to actually any shelter you wanted to look at. Our euthanasia outcomes in 2011, we euthanized 47% of our animals. There are some in the area that are at lower rates than we do. That's what we need to strive for. Hampton has 34%, Portsmouth 25%, and Virginia Beach 39%. I will say that Hampton doesn't really have an adoption policy, it's my understanding. The Virginia Beach, and I can talk about these if you'd like, but I, in the interest of, I'm not going to. Virginia Beach has a couple of ways that they make their, have a better, get a better rate. And two of them are they send more animals to rescues than we do, and they go to SPCA, and we would like to do that as well. And they also have a much higher reuniting rate, getting their animals back to their owners, and we would like to do that as well. So we're going to learn from some of what the other agencies do to try to improve our rate and therefore lower our euthanasia rate.
And Portsmouth's numbers as of June 30th were 15%.
15.
And Portsmouth is a no-kill, am I correct?
My understanding, and we have people in the group who know much more than I do, my understanding is Portsmouth is a partially private-public type of operation.
But it's the only facility in Portsmouth, right?
Right.
So, but they're a no-kill facility?
I don't think they're a no-kill facility. Does somebody, Barbara, Barbara Hayes, who's the operator, Barbara?
They're a no-kill.
No kill?
Okay. I've heard both sides, so I'm not sure.
So just so I can understand, so 60% of the cats in 2011 were euthanized?
Yes.
That's unacceptable.
I agree. And that is, that is one of the reasons, frankly, why the.
Basically, one in two animals is unacceptable. I understand that we're going to, you're going to use, trust me, I understand the idea of an adoptable and an unadoptable. I get it. But we're still looking at basically 50% of the animals that come in are euthanized.
That's correct.
That's absolutely unacceptable.
And if we, I mean, if you look at other cities too, I mean, that are doing other things, why are 50% of our animals, what's wrong with 50% of our animals compared to, I mean, cats for cats?
You swim in Portsmouth if you're a cat.
We don't.
Cats don't swim.
Cats are cats. Dogs are dogs. They chase a fairy.
Take a fairy.
I agree with you, and that's why we have, you'll see as I go forward, we have some goals.
Okay.
Because it is unacceptable. I mean, I own three cats. I think it's unacceptable. All of mine have been, you know, they found me.
Yep.
So I agree, it's unacceptable.
Don't Virginia Beach have some policy about if you don't reclaim, their reconnection rates are higher because they have a policy about if you don't claim your dog or cat in a certain amount of time, it's automatically euthanized? So it kind of motivates their owners if they lose their dog or cat?
That's Hampton.
It's Hampton.
Hampton does not have an adoption, and it doesn't work with rescues. So if you don't come get your animal, your animal is euthanized.
Anne, Peninsula, does that mean Newport News, everybody?
It's, yes, Newport News, Cosin.
Portsmouth has a private partnership, and who do they partner with? Who does Portsmouth partner with?
They have, that's a Peninsula.
No, no, I'm sorry, Portsmouth. This Portsmouth, you said they have a public-private partnership?
That's my understanding. Is it, my understanding is a public-private Portsmouth.
Portsmouth is a private humane society, but they hold the city's animal control contract, so they provide animal control services to the city of Portsmouth.
So it's a humane society and the city.
And to your point, Mayor, and I agree with the discussion that's occurring now about, you know, getting to acceptable levels, but one thing that happens in Norfolk is that we have open admissions, and it is a taxpayer-funded facility. So we take everything. And what Anne is talking about, you know, cats and dogs, 5,600, but when you start to look at the bigger number, 2011, you know, it was close to 6,300. And so I'm just saying that we don't, where some facilities may say, no, we're not going to accept this animal, we take them all.
And we have to.
And we have to. That is by the state.
Why do some facilities not have to?
Yeah.
If they're not a shelter, a municipal shelter, then they can have their own criteria for taking animals.
Is that what Portsmouth does?
So the humane society can have some criteria.
Is that what Portsmouth does?
Yes. They have an appointment system for surrendered animals, where I encourage people to advertise them on the track.
So you can't just come drop off an animal at Portsmouth? Okay, well, that's.
You just push the animals back.
Well, if it works over there, why can't you try it here? I mean, keep going, Anne.
Okay.
So Barker's got a good question. In Portsmouth, if a dog catcher picks up the dog, where does the dog go?
To the animal care center.
Do they have to accept that, right?
Yes, because if it's picked up, it has to, if they're doing that service for Portsmouth, then if it's picked up, it has to go to them.
What percentage, I know we're running late, of people dropping? What percentage, I know we're running late, of people drop their dogs off versus dogs that we pick up? Do you have that number?
I don't know.
I don't know their breakdown between owner surrendered and stray. I know that providing the city contract, they have to accept whatever stray animals come their way. But they do have an appointment system if you want to give up your pet, and you also have to pay a sizable surrender fee to...
Wow, what, you had to guess what percentage it'd be?
It's typically, in most shelters of that nature, it's probably about 60-40. 60% stray, 40% owner surrender. And that's just a best guess, I don't know that much.
No surrender, but don't look for it, right?
We talked about this a little bit earlier, criteria for looking at animals and determining adoptability, so I'm going to keep going. You're right, we need to have, take care of animals better, and we have some, we're setting some goals for the year that we're in, the calendar year that we're in. These are the goals, which I'd like to go through with you. We started a foster care program in 2009 when Barbara came to work for the city. It is used to take care of animals that aren't quite ready for adoption. They may be ill, they may have something that needs to, to deal with them physically. But oftentimes, it's kittens or puppies, primarily kittens, that need to stay with their moms before they can be adopted. So that foster care was, program was started. In the 2011, we put 209 into the foster care system, and out of that, we completed 172 adoptions. And so far this year, we have 203 in that foster care program, with 166 being adopted.
So we've almost doubled it from last year.
We're doing great on foster care, yes.
But we can do better.
But we can do better. We have some next steps. We are looking at best practices, so we can do better. We want to make the program stronger. We, of course, in a foster care program, you need to have volunteers who are willing to have the animals in their home and take care of them. So we have a goal for 2012 that we will increase the percentage of eligible animals going into foster care by 25%. The next thing that we're looking at is adoption outcomes. We're doing better with adoption as well. We're doing, we're either equal to or better than, if we can compare ourselves in the region, to all but two, but we still can do better. And we're setting goals for ourselves in order to be able to do that. Here's our adoptions. And I will say, our cat adoptions are going through the roof. That's because there's been a special focus on cats. Yes, I am part of cats.
It's because they're better than dogs.
They're not better, because I have them dogs, but they're hard to adopt, and they're a lot of...
You're going to start getting letters on them. You're getting letters, watch out.
They're a lot of them. Our change is 2006 is 189%, which is great. And our dogs have gone up too. That's gone up by 37%. So we're, we're increasing our adoptions, and that's really one of the ways that we need to, to make it better for us, for the families that adopt, and for the animals. We just did Kitty Palooza, which was incredible. I went out there, there were kittens everywhere, and cats, and people were adopting everything, kittens and cats. In four days, 150 animals were adopted. It was decorated, it was great, there were people everywhere. There was a reduced fee, as you can see from the flyer, and people were adopting moms and their kittens and all kinds of things. There were 132 kitties adopted that day, or those, in those four days. It was one rabbit, and the rest were dogs.
When they were adopted, are they spayed and neutered?
They were spayed and neutered them, yes, before they go out home with their owner. We don't want to make a lot more of cats and dogs. We have other adoption programs going on. The Folk for Love is a regional one, we participate in that. Golden Paws is adoptions of senior animals with our older residents, and our, again, it's our 501(c)(3) helps out with that by subsidizing it. And Pets for Patriots is a special program, is the discount for military and veterans. So we're trying to hit all of the different markets of people who would be interested in having pets. We do public relations, a lot, most of it's done in-house. Some of it is funded by the Friends, again, the Friends of the Animal Care Center. We focus on positive messages, making it a positive experience for people to come to the shelter and find the pet to take home. We have a comprehensive adoption policy. This was changed a lot when our new manager came. It used to be very long, lots of papers to fill out. We've shortened that down, still made it very effective. We're trying to make sure that people retain their pets when they take them home. People need to learn about taking care of a dog and taking care of a cat. So we teach them that. They're welcome to come back and call, ask us questions. We would like, we want to be a place that helps people once they get their cat home or their dog home and they have questions. We have a goal for adoptions of 2012 and 2012.
You say create a reputation for the shelter, we can place where the pet owners will turn to for advice.
Yes.
Is that a, a number that is readily available, we can call? And I'll get back to Carrie, Dr. Trace has come, she'd help defer, and, you know, is that number something that we can make sure is out?
Yes, we can put that out, yes. And some people can call and say, you know, my, my, whatever, my cat isn't using the litter box, or my dog isn't, you know, going on a leash, what do I do? So we can help them through that process of training their new pet and acclimating themselves in their pet. In terms of rescue, we presently work with 32 different rescue agencies. We send them bi-weekly lists of the animals that are available in the shelter, so that we have a constant changing. If they need to have a certain kind of animal, they can be watching our lists to see what's available. 2011, we sent 164 animals to the rescue agencies for them to then find homes for. A lot of them are, you know, specific to a breed. This year, we want to make better partnerships and create a consortium with our municipal shelters and get some best practices around working with the rescues. We'd like to do, we have two different goals. One of them is to increase our resource network, so when we have an animal that comes in that we think would be interested, that a rescue agency would be interested in, we know who to contact. And we'd like to increase the number of animals being transferred to rescue organizations by 30%. They have their own networks that they can get into to have the animals find a home. Proactive reunions, this is one of the measurements that hasn't changed with time, and we acknowledge that, and we want to make a big push on proactive reunions in 2012. This is reuniting an owner with their lost animal. Our next step in this is to get a database. We're going to work with the Treasurer's Office. If someone comes in and gets a license for their pet, we'd like that to go into a database. And then when Animal Control picks up an animal, we can check that database, and the police officer can take the animal back to its home rather than bringing it into the shelter. Or if someone calls the shelter, we can look up and look in our database and try to find their pet for them. We want to increase the number of animals reunited with their owners by 10%. It's low this year because there's some work to be done to get this database in place.
What are we finding with chipped animals? Do you have the chip in the shoulders?
Yes, we look for chips.
All right, is it, is it scanned?
Yes. Yeah, and we use that.
Every animal that comes in is scanned, and the challenge sometimes with microchips is people move around so much...
Right.
That it may be registered to somebody, but you can't get ahold of them.
I mean, I understand we are a transient city at times. I get that.
But if we can get people to, they need to license their pet, but they may license their pet if they realize that when they license it, the, you know, just by having themselves in the database, they'll be able to get their, we'll be able to make that connection I'm not going to summarize the goals because we're running out of time. The advisory board...
You skipped TNR, that was the last one.
No, no, I'm not there yet, I'm not there. It's coming, it's coming. We have a welfare board now, which is chaired by the Police Department. It's been, and it, it's been in place for a while. And it deals with the decisions that, around the activities of the Police Department, which is different than the Animal Care Center. Reposed Animal Advisory Board would have membership that reflects a diversity. This is a very diverse discussion about animals and what is best, and how, how is best to deal with animals. So the recommended voting members are the Animal Rescue, Tidewater, Virginia Association of Animal Shelters, People for the Ethical Treatment of Animals, the SPCA, Norfolk, the Friends of the Animal Care Center, a licensed veterinarian who lives or works in Norfolk, and three citizens. Then the non-voting members would be the manager of the Animal Care Center, the police captain of Animal Control, so that we get that connection, and the public health director.
And that's your recommendation, right?
That's the recommendation, yes.
We had a nice debate at our committee.
From the discussion in the committee.
I just have a quick question.
There'll be one or two that I want to add, but go ahead.
The committee, and it was also discussed kind of by council during the budget time, there, we are, we would like to push towards a no-kill and how that's adopted, whether this board decides that down the road, or if council takes a position on it. But we want to move, I think that's what I got from everybody, we want to move in that direction. One of those organizations, the Virginia Association of Animal Shelters, does not allow members that are no-kill shelters. And so I think that when we go to look at that, I think that that's something that we might want to consider, because if we're moving in that direction, then that would be a conflict with that organization serving on the board. I got over the PETA thing, so it's fine.
We had a very...
Robust discussion.
And I had a good discussion about trying to get that diversity on our, on the board.
We can, we're still going to discuss that, then. I, that's not a done deal. That's got to come through.
Yeah, I'd like to see the Humane Society up there somewhere as well.
Okay, can someone please take notes?
Federation of Humane Society.
You may, we've got some more. Let me, because you're, I'm running you over time. These would be the responsibilities of the advisory board. Planning for a new animal center, raising funds, recruiting volunteers, discussing policies to come to council, making a recommendation, informing the public, and then it would be staffed by the Animal Care Center staff.
We're tasked in them with raising money.
That came out of the committee.
Did what?
For the Animal Care Center, for new animals.
Sure, it's kind of like the lib board.
You're right.
But I, I think they're also working with the Friends of the Animal Shelter.
The Friends of the Animal Shelter's a 501(c)(3), you can raise money.
The board would help with that.
You didn't, but you should have.
The Friends of the Animal Shelter would help with...
That's why you're not on it.
They're a 501(c)(3), they can raise funds.
Okay, can I, or are you finished, Anne? Are you?
I'm almost there. TNR, trap, neuter, release, this is what it's all about. This is one of the things that the advisory board would be looking at. They would be doing these things, reviewing the codes when they look through their review.
But isn't the tail wagging the dog there? I mean, doesn't that something that, and Paul, I think, isn't that something that, if that's a policy that we come up with, don't, because I see it as a policy, and we're, what we're doing is we're giving policy up to a board that's appointed, but it wouldn't be more applicable that we say, as a, we discuss it, we come up with it, we say, this is the policy, we want you to come, to implement, and instead, we're dishing it off and asking them to come back and tell us what the policy should be. And I don't think as leaders, that's our responsibility.
Well, since you...
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you've been here longer than I have. I'm not saying you're right. I'm not saying you're right, I'm just wanting, just on some guidance.
But, you know, I'm not sure it's a policy issue, to be honest with you. I really, I think we've got an administrative, we've got a city manager who, who is charged with the administration of the city, and that would include animal control. And I would defer to him as to have, he wants, how this matters, I mean, should be run as far as control, if the animal control. I don't know that it's a policy matter. Some people here may want to make it some, and maybe, you know, the most, the majority of the council thinks it's a policy matter. I think what the manager is recommending and what we're, where we're headed is appropriate, because I don't want to get into the manager's stuff too much. You know, I mean, before you know it, we'll, anyway, so there. But other people may think it's a policy.
To me, that's, the ring's a policy.
As far as an ordinance, it needs to be changed in order to allow that to happen.
Well, yeah, if we say we want TNR, if there's a body say we want TNR, then we leave it to that body to develop how it's going to be implemented.
They might not want to do it citywide, they might want to start off in a neighborhood. I, maybe that...
Well, Marcus and I discussed doing it for the short term, doing it for 18 months or something like that, then come back and looking at it and saying, okay.
An 18-month probation, wow.
Yeah. The TNR only gets to stay open till 1:00.
Okay.
And then they'll outcall the TNR.
Make sure you get that petition going.
It's prohibited now, so it would have to be a change, and the recommendation will come back to the advisory board, but it seems like there's more...
I do have one big thing that needs to be talked about, that Marcus has, and Marcus, I think I'm speaking for you. One of the biggest arguments that we've had is that the numbers haven't matched up. We've heard about it from the newspaper, we've heard it from a lot of folks. And so, Marcus, do you want to talk about how you're looking at, going to do that now?
Sure. You know, basically, when you start to look at the numbers, to make a long story short, we base it all on the state numbers. So when Anne talked about a 53% save rate, that, that's apples to apples. That is the way that every locality reports the information to the, to the state. It takes out any subjectivity. So we could say that there are some animals that are unadoptable, and we could get into a large, large discussion about behavior and things of that nature. But when we start to do, when we did this presentation, this is apples to apples, and that's the way we're starting our data collection and how we benchmark.
But you also said you're going to have an independent person on your team now that's doing this.
Sure, sure, as a matter of fact...
Yeah, so it's not being generated from the animal group. This was somebody, am I correct?
Sure, this is actually Susan Perry, who works in...
Right, so the, the information comes from a more independent...
Sure.
When we start scheduling trips, again, can we put this on our agenda to, does that the animal management center?
Carrie went today, absolutely.
I was there today.
But I don't, would you like, would you want to try to come to terms with this before we go on vacation or after vacation? Because we can schedule some time on the, you know, late in the day or somewhere on the 24th. I'd like to read the material that you put out here. I'd like to know if it's on your, on your board, and that we probably ought to post it somewhere on the web, so people, we can get a lot of responses from folks and, you know, publish this. So people think we're, we'll probably get a lot of, a lot of response.
I feel like we have been responding, I mean, I, I don't know how we can get any more information. I mean, we have got, I mean, we've all been besieged with comments.
I think we know where we are. It's all about transparency, guys. Well, how, do you want to schedule some time to come to terms with this, I mean, in two weeks?
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to talk some more about, but I think that we all know what our positions are. I mean, we're not, we're not uneducated as to what we are believed in. We had literally months of this. So we just need to somehow get our hands around it, and we can get on and, I agree, Paul.
And then just taking up a bunch of that.
Yeah. Even if we do it...
Promise me we'll finish this in two weeks. Promise me.
No, it's all a win, Paul.
I'm here, I'll be here all week long.
Only a hundred.
I'm in support of this, I want you to bring it back up to the council.
Yeah, I, that's a, I'm pretty left-wing.
I missed him giving it up. Was he having given it up?
One time.
I'm supportive, I mean, you brought it up the first time, I don't know why it was such a big issue.